Good evening. My name is Chuck Iovin, and I'll be presiding over the Planning Board meeting November 13th, 2024. For those in attendance, under the provisions of the Open Meeting Law, attendees are being informed that this meeting is being recorded by Urban Media Arts and will be livestreamed on Malden Access MATV YouTube site. I have not been notified that any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. The first thing I'd like to say is that with the absence of Tawadegh Gabrisalassi and Ronnie Raj Verma, Stephanie Stone will be voting on all the items before us this evening. The next thing we will do is we will do the roll call. So we'll start with Risa.
Risa Gray.
Dianne Chuhar, Planning Board.
Ken Antonucci, Planning Board.
Chuck Iovin, Planning Board.
Eric McCush, Planning Board.
Pat Hayes, Planning Board.
Eric Henry, Planning Board.
Henry Susi, Planning Board.
Stephanie Stone, Planning Board.
Thank you very much. The first items we will hear are for the proposed Lot 13B at Zero State Highway and also proposed Lot 14B at Zero State Highway. There'll be one notice read and two votes taken. Diane, could you read the notice, please? Give me a second. Why isn't this working? Thank you.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, on the following two petitions of WIN Development made on behalf of Overlook Ridge LLC, seeking a special permit under Title 12, Chapter 12, Section 300 of the Code of the City of Malden for an inclusionary development. One, the petition in permit application number CMID-068997-2024 to construct a building for multifamily residential dwelling use with a total of 99 units, including 15 affordable housing units, on the proposed building lot known as Lot 13B. And the number two, the petition in permit application number CMID-068998-2024 to construct a building for multifamily residential dwelling use for a total of 82 dwelling units, including 13 affordable housing units, on the proposed building lot known as Lot 14B. Both proposed lots, part of land classified as the Rose Quarry Reclamation and Redevelopment District Sub-District, RQ3, located on portions of the property known as and numbered Zero State Highway, Malden, Mass., and also known by City of Malden Assessors Parcel Identification Number 185575506.
Thank you, Diane. Is the petition a present? If you'd like to come up and you can give your presentation. I'd also like to remind everyone who does come up to the podium, please give your name and residential address for the record, and please make sure you sign in on the clipboard. Thank you.
Am I able to approach to hand out hard copies of the presentation?
Yes, you're welcome to. Would you like the screen for PowerPoint or anything?
Yes, I would agree.
Thank you.
Same thing you have here.
Thank you. That way the audience can see us, see what you're presenting.
Great. I can get started. Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Sam Randall. I am part of the development team at WIN Development. As you just heard, we are here for two separate applications for inclusionary zoning special permit approval. Because we have two separate presentations in two separate buildings, I will be walking you through the same things in two presentations. I'll try to be quicker about it the second time, so you don't have to hear me give the same spiel twice. The building that we're starting with is for Lot 13B, which is a mixed-income senior rental housing project. You can see that it's roughly outlined in the master plan on the screen there in yellow. So briefly, the agenda, I'll give a brief overview of WIN Development, a very brief overview again of the very long history of the Overlook Ridge development, as well as mentioning the completed phases to date. I'll give a brief overview on Malden Inclusionary Zoning, which I know you are all familiar with, but I'll explain why this project falls within that and why we're before you this evening. And then I will jump into the specific project site and the proposed development, which contains, as I mentioned, senior rental housing. And then I will also briefly touch on the project timeline. So Overlook Ridge project history, I'll take you back almost 25 years now to around the year 2000. So in 2001, Roseland, which is now Varis Residential, started to transform the existing then-rock quarry into a master plan redevelopment. So you can see in the photo on the top, this was before any of the development took place. The bottom photo is in 2022, showing that this master plan development is largely built out to date. Historical site work that's taken place throughout the term of all of the development there is significant blasting of rock and significant importing of material fill that was suitable for development onto the quarry floor. Also, as part of the history and overall development, all remediation and onsite and offsite utilities and infrastructure work has been done to date. So why WIN Companies? So I'll just briefly tell you who we are. WIN is a private, family-owned company out of Boston that was founded in 1971, and today we've grown into a team of approximately 4,400 individuals across 27 states, as well as Washington DC and Puerto Rico. We have three distinct divisions. One is WIN Development, which we'll tell you a little bit more about, and we also have WIN Residential and WIN Military. So we are the largest and most respected provider of resident services in addition to being a developer. We do intend to hold this project and manage it on our own. And because this specific building will be senior housing, we will also provide a service package for seniors at the building, such as activities, like social and community activities and other things that are specific to seniors. We are also one of the largest managers of affordable housing and low-income housing tax credit housing in the United States. So specifically, WIN Development, I mentioned we have three different tranches of WIN Companies. WIN Development is one of them. We have acquired and developed over 130 housing properties in 11 states, including DC, and that goes across all income levels, asset types, and market types. We are also a leading advocate for federal and state laws and funding programs, which is significant here because one of the funding sources we're seeking is low-income housing tax credits. So we've done a lot of that. In the last 10 years, we have completed more than four dozen multifamily projects. You can see a couple of them on the right. We just thought it would be nice to give some projects that might be similar to what we're proposing here as examples. And as I mentioned already, we are a long-term owner, and we operate all of our projects. So we really take pride in the communities that we build in, and we don't just build to sell. We stay in it, and we try to be a good neighbor. So completed phases and public improvements to date. So Varis has completed a little over 1,200 residential units across 10 buildings in Malden, and then some additional units as well in Revere. There have also been significant offsite improvements done over the years, including a seven-acre passive recreation area that was constructed, a two-acre community park on the campus, a 7,000-square-foot fire station, that's a joint-Malden-Revere fire station, amongst other improvements. So jumping specifically to why we're before you this evening, Malden's Inclusionary Zoning. So as you know, the Inclusionary Zoning ordinance was adopted in October of 2021, and to date, I already mentioned that Varis has completed approximately 1,200 residential units in Malden. It's important to note that none of those units have been affordable. So what we're proposing this evening actually exceeds the Inclusionary Zoning provisions, which I'll get into in a minute. And then generally, the reason this project applies to the Inclusionary Zoning provisions is because any development that results in a net increase of eight or more units is subject to this. So tonight, we're seeking two special permits, one for 13B, which is the subject of this presentation, and then one for 14B, which will follow. 13A is a third parcel that WIN Development will develop in the future. That will be a multifamily building, which I'll show you on a site plan in a second. That will also come before this board for an Inclusionary Special Permit, but at a later date, just because it's essentially lagging by a year and a half to two years on the development timeline. We are also not seeking any density bonuses, no offsite IZ units, or any other alternative methods of compliance. This project really does comply with all components of the IZ policy as written. Okay, so the project site. So we've really zoomed in on one portion of the Overlook master plan, the portion that is yet to be developed, obviously. So 13B is the 99 age-restricted rental housing units that I mentioned. We included a rendering, which is the front-entry perspective of that 13B development, and the main entry essentially is what you see the arrow pointing to, so facing Lot 13A. And then briefly, I'll touch on the other phases as well. So the other presentation that you will hear tonight is regarding Lot 14B, which you can see at the bottom of the page. That one is 82 home ownership condominium for sale units. And then Lot 13A is the third WIN Development project, which will be, that's the future development that I mentioned, that will be up to 210 units of multifamily housing. So the proposed project, jumping right in. So it will be age-restricted to those 55 years and older. It will be 99 total units, and the Inclusionary Zoning ordinance requires that 15% of these units will be affordable to those earning less than 50% of the area median income. So we will be complying with that. And then above and beyond these required inclusionary units, we are committing to having an additional 40% of the total units at or below 80% AMI for an additional level of affordability. Regarding the IZ units specifically, you can see the table below, which breaks out just by bedroom type what the proposed IZ unit mix will be. So this building will have only one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. It's really, the majority of the units are one-bedroom. So the IZ unit breakdown, it corresponds directly with the total overall unit mix, which is a requirement of your policy. So jumping to that, Section F of your ordinance requires that the IZ unit mix be proportional to the overall unit mix, that all units within the project be completed with the same finishes, that they're evenly distributed throughout the building, and that they all be constructed at the same time. There will also be a local preference for Malden residents. So all of that is part of our proposal this evening. So the project timeline. So obviously, we're before you tonight for two of the phases for an IZ special permit. And as required by the regulations, beyond the IZ special permit, both of these projects tonight will be heard by the Rose Quarry Site Plan Review Committee for Site Plan Review, and I believe that date is December 16th, is the tentative date that will be heard for both of the buildings on that. Concurrently, we are also working through our financing applications to the state agencies, and this is for the low-income housing tax credit programs that I mentioned previously. And kind of with that, the timing to pull a building permit and starting construction does depend on when the state agencies make that funding available to the project, but our ultimate goal, and we're working really hard to make this happen, is that we break ground on this project in 2025. So that concludes the formal presentation for 13B. Maybe it makes sense to pause, or would you like me to jump into the other one?
No, actually, I just have one quick question on just clarifying and making sure I'm thinking that it's right before you shift into the next phase of it. So with regard to the number of units, right, the wording of it was that you met the IZ, Malden-IZ component, at 15%. So in this case, it would be about 15 units.
Correct.
Right? And then your presentation presented 40% would be senior housing, right? So that 40%, does that include the 15%? So are we talking about going from 15 units to 40, or are we talking about going from 15 units to 55?
It's a great question, and it's a little bit confusing. So you're correct that we're providing 15 IZ units.
Mm-hmm.
And then that additional tranche of affordable units is 40% of the total number of units at 80% AMI, so that's 40 units. But to complicate things, the IZ units actually fall within that tranche of affordability as well. So it's essentially 25 extra units of affordability.
Okay.
It's not additive.
So in total, it's 40?
Correct.
It's not incremental?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. No, that's very helpful. And when you say mixed-income family housing, you mean market rate?
No, so it would be a mix of different levels of affordability as well, with some market rate units.
Okay.
Yes, we'll have some market rate units here.
But a minimum of 40% of the total being somewhere between 0 and 80%?
Yes.
Or 50? No, 0 and 80 is what I have for the additional from my notes from the letter you submitted.
25 and 40.
Right, but in total, so there'll be 15 from 51 to 80, and then 25 between 0 and 80?
So actually, the requirement for the IZ units is less than 50% AMI.
Okay.
Which then also, I mean, that means we would also, those units, those IZ units would also fall within what we're saying would be the 80% AMI, so less than 80% AMI units.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions before they move on? Eric Henry?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I just had a quick question with regard to your potential for groundbreaking in 2025. What does slippage look like?
So our groundbreaking is really going to be dependent on when we receive our financing. So is that what you're asking, the slippage on the schedule?
Yes, so if you're alluding to certain grants and funding sources, if you miss this cycle, would it slip back to 2026?
It could, but they also often have mini rounds, and so we may be invited to a mini round, which wouldn't make us slip that entire year. So it could be six months. If they, I think they'll see that this is, if it doesn't happen in this cycle, they'll see that this is a very strong project, and they'll likely want to fund it. We've seen that before, where we slip essentially to a mini round.
Thank you.
Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you. I had asked you this via email, but I just wanted if you could explain for the record the different documents, as you've noticed and as you've seen in the presentation, it's called sometimes senior housing, sometimes 55-plus, sometimes elderly housing, sometimes age-restricted housing, and I had asked, what exactly is it? Because it seems like there's a lot of different terms being used. So if you could just clarify for the record, what is, when you say senior housing, what do you mean?
Sure. So generally, like in our industry, it may be a little bit silly, but all of those terms like senior housing, age-restricted housing, elderly housing, they're often used interchangeably. So the intent here is that these units would be restricted to those with a head of household older than 55 years old. And actually, because of the state funding that we are seeking, we are subject to state, or actually, it's federal fair housing laws regarding elderly housing. So you know, there were some questions about, well, who else can live in those units? The only real restriction we can put on it is that the head of household is older than 55. So there may be some people living in these units potentially that are younger than that, although I would also offer that most of these units are one-bedroom. So sort of by nature, it's not as likely that there will be more people living in the unit. We've seen, you know, couples where one person is 55, one person is not. So the one-bedrooms sort of self-select that others may not be living in the household as well.
Okay, so is it 55 or older, or older than 55?
55 or older, I believe. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You all set, Michelle?
Yep, thank you.
You can continue, Ms. Randall.
On to the next one, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Randall, if I could ask you after the meeting, if you could send both these presentations electronically to Michelle so that we have them for our records?
Absolutely, we will do that.
Thank you.
Okay. So for the record, my name is Sam Randall. I am part of the development team at WIN Development, and the subject of this presentation will be Lot 14B, which I did reference in the previous presentation. A lot of these slides, again, will be a little bit repetitive, so I will, I'll speed it up a little bit and not bore you with the details again. So this project is the proposed mixed-income home ownership for sale units. You can see our rough outline on the overall Overlook master plan that shows the area of the site relative to the rest of the development. I'll just jump right in. So I don't think I need to spend a lot of time on who we are, WIN Companies, but again, we're a private, family-owned company. We were founded in 1971, and we have a team of over 4,400 individuals. We are one of the largest managers of affordable housing and low-income tax credit housing in the US. I think that those are really the highlights. I won't bore you with this again. WIN Development, so again, we have developed over 130 properties in 11 states. We are a leading advocate for federal and state laws and funding programs across the country. We've completed more than four dozen multifamily projects, which also does include some home ownership projects in addition to the many rental projects that we've developed. We are a long-term owner and operator as well. Site history, so again, flashing back to 2001, when Roseland, which is now Varis Residential, began to transform the existing then-rock quarry. So they prepped the site by doing significant blasting and import of acceptable material to fill and grade the quarry floor for future development. So a significant amount of the master plan has been developed to date. In Malden, that includes over 1,200 residential units in 12 buildings, and there are also a number of units in Revere. Significant offsite improvements have been constructed to date, including a seven-acre recreation area, a two-acre community park, a 7,000-square-foot joint-fire station, and other improvements necessary for the development. So again, the Malden Inclusionary Zoning, none of the units completed in Malden to date are affordable. So what we're doing is we're coming in and providing mixed-income developments, which actually provide more affordability than is required under your Inclusionary Ordinance. That ordinance was adopted in October 2021. This building also, like the previous proposal, resulted in a net increase of eight or more units, therefore, we're subject to the Inclusionary Ordinance. This is the second of the two IZ special permits that we are seeking this evening. 13A, the multifamily building, will follow at a later date. Again, similar to the last proposal, we are not seeking density bonuses, any offsite units, or any other alternative methods of compliance. We really are complying with all components as written. Okay, so this shows, again, like a zoomed-in version of the projects to be developed at Overlook Ridge. So 14B is 82 home ownership condominium units. This, again, is a front-entry perspective of what the building will look like as you approach the front entry, which, similar to 13B, kind of faces like the interior of the master plan development. So there will be significant landscape, streetscape improvements as well as part of the project. So it's 82 total home ownership for sale units. In compliance with your Inclusionary Zoning ordinance, 15 of those units will be affordable to those making less than 80% of the area median income. And above and beyond those inclusionary units that I just mentioned, we are committed to having up to 40% of the total units be affordable to those earning 70 to 80% of the area median income, and up to 40% of the total units earning 81 to 120% of the area median income. We will also have a number of market rate units. So it is 13 total IZ units at or below 80% AMI, and in this building, we have one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. The majority of those are one- and two-bedroom units, so you'll see that the IZ units are proposed to be proportional across the overall unit mix for the project. So like I just mentioned, proportional to the overall unit mix of the project, all units within the project will also be completed with the same finishes as all of the market rate units, and they will be evenly So 14B is 82 home ownership condominium units. This, again, is a front-entry perspective of what the building will look like as you approach the front entry, which, similar to 13B, kind of faces like the interior of the master plan development. So there will be significant landscape, streetscape improvements as well as part of the project. So it's 82 total home ownership for sale units. In compliance with your inclusionary zoning ordinance, 15 of those units will be affordable to those making less than 80% of the area median income. And above and beyond those inclusionary units that I just mentioned, we are committed to having up to 40% of the total units be affordable to those earning 70 to 80% of the area median income, and up to 40% of the total units earning 81 to 120% of the area median income. We will also have a number of market-rate units. So it is 13 total IZ units at or below 80% AMI. And in this building, we have one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. The majority of those are one- and two-bedroom units. So you'll see that the IZ units are proposed to be proportional across the overall unit mix for the project. So like I just mentioned, proportional to the overall unit mix of the project, all units within the project will also be completed with the same finishes as all of the market-rate units. And they will be evenly distributed throughout the building. They will also be built in one phase at the same time, and there will be local preferences to Malden residents. Project timeline, so similar to 13B, this project will be heard by the Rose Quarry Site Plan Review Committee on the same evening that 13B will be heard. And that date is tentatively scheduled for December 16. And concurrently, similar to 13B, we are submitting applications to state agencies for funding of this project. And our building permit and construction start, the timing of that does depend on when the funds are made available by the state agencies. But we see this 14B project running essentially in parallel with 13B, where our goal is to break ground in 2025. That concludes the formal presentation.
Okay, and just to be clear, on 14B, 40% of the 82 would be 33 affordable units, of which 13 are associated with the Malden IZ and 20 are additional.
That's right. And then, and then it would be up to 32 additional for that next tranche of affordability.
Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, okay, so, and again, this is a little bit confusing. It's similar to the last proposal. So we have 15% of, that are IZ units, that's 13 units. And those are for those making less than 80% of the area median income. Then, the 70 to 80% AMI tranche that we're providing above the inclusionary requirement results in, I have it as 32 units, but it may be 33 units. So that would result in 19 extra units above the inclusionary requirement, because that's the same income tier. And then, the 81 to 120 would be a separate income tier from, like, from the IZ income tier. So that would be 32 units, up to 32 units.
With 32 more incremental units?
Yes, yes.
So now, we're not talking about 33 units. We're talking about 65, 64, 65?
I'm getting 51. Oh, and 13, I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot that. So 64, yeah, that's right.
Okay, and I think you elected to round up? In a couple of those instances, in one of them, you round up 15%, and the other, you round up 70%. So that's where the 13 is coming from versus the other.
That's correct, yep. Yeah, we rounded up on the IZ units.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so that we are talking the extra incremental units for that 80 to 121?
That's right.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the petitioner? Eric Henry.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, and thank you again as well. So just to be clear, so we're talking about 18 units that are going to be at market rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is this, this sort of format, tier format of AMI staggering, is this kind of standard across your properties?
It is. We have a lot of properties that have mixed-income tiers and that also have a level of market-rate units.
Have you ever considered doing this for any of your other holdings here?
It's a good question, like, so you mean doing the different tiers?
Yes.
Yes, but my understanding is it depends on the state funding source. They have specific requirements for income tiers. Not to get too technical, but 14B, the home ownership project, is seeking a different kind of state subsidy. It's not low-income housing tax credits. So they have different requirements. So to the extent we are able, we definitely look at staggering the affordability.
Thank you for the deviation, but I appreciate the knowledge.
Thanks.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, if I could, could you clarify for the record? It, you, for this particular, for Lot 14B, you may create the additional affordability-restricted units. So you may not see only 18 market-rate units. You may see as many as 69, right? Because this is just, you're going to try to do it for Lot 14B. 13B, you are committing to doing the additional?
Yes, it is written "may", and it, again, depends on, there's a lot of feedback that we received through the state funding process, where the funding agencies may want to see different levels of affordability. So it really does depend on what we run into in that funding process. But the intent would not be to do that many market-rate units in this building.
Okay, and I'm just clarifying, so that if the board decides to grant a special permit and it includes conditions that state what shall be required, that for Lot 14B, you will not be required to do the additional. You may do the additional.
Correct, yes.
But for 13B, you will be required to do the additional affordable. Is that correct, or you?
No, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and I just have some different numbers. Eric came up with 18 units. I'm coming up with 16 market-rate units. Yeah, no, no, I was just, I was just curious. So it's 33 for the first 40%, which includes 15% for the, includes 15% for the Malden IZ. So that's 33 units. And then, for that 80 to 121, that would be an additional 33%.
Okay, you're right, yeah.
For 66 total.
That's because it was an incremental unit. I got the same number that you did, but I think it's because I said 32 and 32 versus 33 and 33.
Okay.
That's where the, that's where the difference in the number comes.
Okay, thank you.
So do you want to clarify, which is it? Are you rounding up or are you not rounding up? Just for purposes of the condition, if they decide to grant a special permit?
So I think the condition is specific to the 15%, right? That's required per the inclusionary ordinance. Anything above that, I mean, I have 18 market-rate units is what we would assume. But I think the real focus on what the obligation is for the special permit is the 15%, right?
That is part of the special permit. It's my understanding that the city would like to also include in any special permit that may be granted, your commitment to this additional affordable housing. So that's why we want to make sure the number's right. I have the number being at a minimum of 25 units for Lot 13B. And for Lot 14B, up to an additional, I had 19 units for the 70 to 80 range.
Yep.
And then 32 for the 81 to 120. The chair is thinking you're rounding up, though. You're not rounding up?
That was, no, that was not what I had. I had 32 and 32. But I think if the language is "may" include "up to", I think that's okay, because ultimately, like I said, the exact number of units within those income tiers will be dependent on the funding. As long as we're not, like, required to build that exact number.
I mean, I'm okay. I just wanted to just make sure that I was tracking it properly.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And as Michelle pointed out, I mean, we may not see any of that 80 to 120, even if they may all turn into market-rate units. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is there anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Randall?
No, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. I wasn't planning to do that. If you want to, you're welcome to. No one's expressed an interest in that to me. Okay, at this time, would like to ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone to speak in favor?
Good evening, members of the Malden Planning Board, and Chair, Mr. Iovin. My name is Deborah Burke. I'm the Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development in the City of Malden. I'm here to speak in support of both of these petitions on behalf of myself and on behalf of Mayor Gary Christensen. His administration, including an internal team here of folks, have been working diligently and for several months in order to come up with a development that we feel checks off a number of boxes in terms of the city's desire to expand and increase the supply of affordable housing in the City of Malden, while at the same time retaining a commercial base on site. So eventually, the scenario that's trying to be advanced by Wynn Development as well as in partnership with Varis will result in the creation of upwards of 400 units of housing, including rental, 55 and older housing, which Malden does not have a decent stock of that, and also some market rate, but also a significant number of home ownership affordable opportunities in the city. With, one thing that really needs to be stressed is there will be a 70% preference for Malden residents for, you know, buying into those properties. So that's big. The city has made a commitment to, you know, expanding the supply of affordable housing dating back maybe four years ago, when the city did a comprehensive housing needs analysis that identified the various price points of residence that needed to be serviced here. So an internal team has been working diligently over these past years to advance and array initiatives. This project will bring the, for the first time, the largest amount of affordable housing stock at various typologies to the City of Malden. It's been supported by unanimous votes of the Malden City Council. It received unanimous zone change ratification by this board. And, I don't know, sorry, that wasn't me. And so it is advancing. I think, you know, I just, and I do have a staff person here that's, you know, very knowledgeable and fluent in, you know, the IZ lingo and AMIs and all the acronyms. If you feel there needs to be any further clarifications on that. But I really would caution you to not get bogged down on really, you know, restricting the numbers here. The, you know, the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities as well as Mass Housing and other state funding sources that they are going to apply for to get funding to advance the development, as well as they're also going to seek some local funding that's administered through our office, the Home Program and whatnot. You have to be careful about putting restrictions on them, because, you know, it's a fluid process with them. So I think, I understand wanting to get in the weeds with the numbers, and I'm not disparaging that, and maybe we need to have more of a conversation. But I think the petitions that are before you tonight is, is the developer satisfied the provisions of the inclusionary zoning ordinance, which requires 15%, you know, of a set aside for multifamily properties, eight units and over. But over and above that, they have committed to doing a significant amount of more units, not providing off-site money to have it built elsewhere. It's all going to be built on this site. So I would, you know, sincerely urge of support of this, both of these petitions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this petition, of these petitions? Diane, anything to read in favor?
I do not.
If there's no one else that would like to speak in favor and there's nothing to read, declare that part of the hearing closed. If there's anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this, these petitions? Anyone in opposition? Diane, do you have anything to read in opposition?
I do not.
Thank you. CNN hearing, no one in opposition, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Michelle, can you take us through your staff report, please?
Yes, so I'm reading from the staff report dated November 13, 2024. Note, this, there's a revision date at the bottom, 11/13/24. That's in the margin. So I won't read it verbatim into the record, but it is incorporated here and by reference to the record. So you've heard about the two proposals. I will note for the record, there are two proposed lots, Lot 13B and Lot 14B. They are located on portions of the same property that's known as Arrow State Highway. And those proposed lots are being created as part of the definitive plan of subdivision that was approved by this board last month. You have a copy of the decision in the package. The statutory appeal period for the subdivision expires, decision expires today. I did check with the city clerk, but I was not able to get verification before close of business whether there'd been any appeal filed. They would receive a notice of appeal. So if there has been no appeal, that subdivision plan must be endorsed and recorded and is subject to compliance with conditions of approval. Regarding, I'll mention one other procedural matter. So as you heard, two different petitions were filed. You heard the two different presentations. We did prepare one notice of public hearing that included both petitions. The public hearings were held concurrently by this board tonight. So anybody could testify in favor and opposition for either petition during the public hearing portion. And the board will render a separate decision for each petition. We won't go through, a lot of this has already been discussed as part of the presentation. I do want to note information that I learned today and as you just heard during the presentation is not reflected in the staff report. So you do have the required 15 affordable housing units proposed for Lot 13B. The additional 40% of the total units that will have an affordability income restriction at or below 80% is 39 units, so 40% of 99 is 39. And it was initially, originally, my understanding that the units with affordability restrictions were in addition to the required affordable housing units. As I said today, I learned that is not the case, and you heard that from the petitioner. So for Lot 13B, 15 affordable housing units will be required. And an additional 25 with affordability income restrictions at or below 80% will be also required. You heard about the local preference for Malden residents. That's to the maximum extent permitted by law and funding programs. I did hear Director Burke mention a 70% local preference. I'm not aware of that, so it's up to the board whether you want to include that or not. I did not see anything that said that, but she is testifying to that. I would recommend, if that's correct, that you include that. So in terms of the 15, I will also just note that the ordinance does allow the developer the option to round up. So it was actually a percentage, 14 point, I don't have the exact percentage, was required, and they rounded up to 15, to provide the 15. I've given you a list of all the plans and information that was submitted. You have copies of all that, including different correspondence and memorandums. So for Lot 14B, total of 82 units. That will include 13 affordable housing units as defined by city ordinance. Again, this, what's written here is not correct based on the information that I've received and that you've just received tonight. So 40% of the total units will, may have an affordability income restriction of 70 to 80%. So that's 32 units, but that also includes the 13. So that is potentially an additional 19 units with that affordability restriction. Up to 40% of total units, so that's 32 units, may have an affordability income restriction of 81 to 121% AMI. Again, local preference for Malden residents. Listed the plans and everything you've received. Oh, here's the, I'm sorry, I did have the breakdown under the inclusionary zoning section. So for Lot 13B, 99 new units, 15% of that is 14.85. So they are rounding up to provide 15. Lot 14B, 15% of the 82 units is 12.3 and they're rounding up to 13. I've given you the info here about the eligibility. You also, and you'll note that the standards for rental and homeownership affordable housing units are different. For rental, it is up to 50%. For the homeownership units, it's 51 to 80%. In terms of development standards and affordability, the petitioner did go through how they comply. You also have letters in your package we received from the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development regarding inclusionary zoning compliance. Those are letters dated November 7th. Also attached to that is a memorandum of understanding dated September 26th, 2024, that provides for additional requirements under our ordinance that they'll be satisfied at a future date. Same thing for Lot 14B, you have a letter dated November 7th, 2024 from the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development that confirms they are in compliance with the inclusionary zoning requirements. And then the corresponding memorandum of understanding, again, regarding the additional requirements for lottery plan, marketing plan, draft legal instruments for preservation of affordability. Both proposed lots are part of land classified as part of the zoning district Rose Quarry Reclamation Redevelopment District. They're in Sub District 3. The portion of Sub District 3 that includes the subject of these petitions does allow multifamily use up to six stories by site plan review. Those were recent amendments that this board heard and that were ordained by the City Council. Heard about the master site plan and you saw a portion of that in the presentation. You have a copy of the full master concept site plan. That's the most current plan dated July 17th, 2024. Highway Business Owning District abuts the larger development site to the north and south. To the east is State Highway Route 1. On the other side of Route 1 is the Residence A Zoning District. Direct abut is to the Malden portion of the overall site. To the south are single family, two family dwellings on Vining Street and Salem Street. To the northeast is a self-storage facility. Surrounding land uses residential, business, institutional, the abandoned railroad right-of-way, which contains a public multimodal recreational trail that bites the scene of the Detroit Community Trail. There are other requirements. Development is subject to the land reclamation agreement, which is the agreement between the property owners and the cities of Malden and Revere. Also, you have the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. Review and certificates issued, most recently the one January 22nd, 2024. In terms of dimensional controls, both proposals comply with dimensional regulations for Sub District RQ 3. Compliance with open space requirements and frangible requirements are subject to site plan review. The proposals do not require use of density bonus incentives, as you heard. I've given you the breakdown of density and open space, what's required and what's being provided. Again, these are going to be reviewed under site plan review, but I will note that one of your criteria for the IZ special permit is not only compliance with the IZ requirements, but with the rest of the ordinance. So giving you this information. Parking requirements, the proposals comply with the parking adjustment of the IZ and recent amendments to the parking requirements for multifamily use. They're the same, one space for a affordable housing unit. So the number of spaces being provided is 154 for Lot 13B. For Lot 14B, it's 144. You can see what would be required under current zoning for RQ 3 and also what would be required without the parking adjustment. So in either case, they are exceeding what's required. Other requirements, as I mentioned, will be reviewed under site plan review process, parking layout, driveways, snow storage, trash, loading, screening, things that you typically would look at as part of a special permit. Again, this proposal doesn't need a special permit for the use in terms of our typical use, traditional use regulations. It's coming to you for the IZ special permit, so it's a little bit different. The use is actually allowed by right, it's allowed by site plan review, this multifamily use. Traffic impact will be reviewed under the site plan review process. A final certificate was issued, as I mentioned, that's dated January 22nd, 2024, that according to the ordinance is substitute, can be substituted for study. I need to get a cough drop or something. So findings that are required to grant a special permit. These are the findings under the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. One is compliance with the requirements of the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance and two is compliance with other applicable provisions of the ordinance. So technically, you're not going to know whether they've complied with site plan review because site plan review hasn't happened yet. So that's why one of the recommended conditions is that these proposals are subject to site plan review. So they will need to meet that condition for these special permits to have, to be in effect. So the recommendation, which is prepared prior to the public hearing made, provided the board makes the required findings. So there were two different recommendations and again, you're going to need to take a vote on each one. So the first, regarding proposed Lot 13B, is to grant a special permit subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans except as modified by these conditions. Two, the maximum number dwelling units is 99. A minimum of 15 units shall be affordable housing units as defined by city ordinance. And an additional minimum, I've changed this to 25 units shall be affordability income restricted to households at or below 80% AMI, with a local preference for Malden residents to the maximum extent permitted by law and funding programs. Again, I'm not sure, we heard testimony about not being that specific. It's my understanding that, and it would be my recommendation, that you are as specific as possible if you want to be guaranteed any of this additional affordable housing. The 70% local preference you heard, again, I don't, I don't have anything, any information. I don't believe I have any information that says that. I'm just quickly checking something here. Our ordinance says to the maximum extent permitted by law, local preference for Malden residents. So it doesn't specify the 70%, so that's up to the board whether you want to include that. Three, prior to issuance of any occupancy permit, developer owner shall comply with all terms of the memorandum of understanding dated September 26th, 2024 regarding affordable housing units, which is attached here too and incorporated here and by reference. You have a copy of that in the package. Four, occupancy shall be restricted to households with head of household age 55 years or older. Five, developer owner shall comply with the MEAPR certificate dated January 22nd, 2024 regarding fifth notice of project change. Six, compliance with all conditions of the Malden Planning Board, October 23rd, 2024. Approval of the definitive subdivision plan. You have a copy of that in your package. Seven, no rights authorized with a special permit may be exercised until the approved and endorsed definitive subdivision plan that creates Lot 13B has been recorded by the petitioner owner. Eight, a minimum of 154 parking spaces shall be provided on site for use of the residents. Nine, the proposal is subject to site plan review and requires compliance with Title 12.28140 of the Code of the City of Malden. Site plan and other plans may be modified if required by site plan review approval.
Okay, Michelle, thank you for reading that. So it looks like on this first piece for Lot 13B, we made one change of the additional minimum of 25 units shall be affordable income restricted to households at or below 80% AMI. Excuse me, Ms. Randall, would you mind coming up for a second? With the wording of that condition, do you see that impeding your funding efforts?
Saying must, is that the, would you mind reading the language specifically?
It's, it's the same one that was passed out to you. So it's just the numbers changing. It says an additional minimum, and actually, my math is wrong. I guess it's 24. Units shall be affordable, income restricted to households at or below 80% AMI. So I'm sorry, that's 24. 39 minus 20, 39 minus 15.
So that, so before, before we get to that, do you, do you see a problem putting in these numbers for your financing?
No, I don't see a problem with that.
We certainly don't want to have come this far and not run into a problem. Now with regard to, to the other, are they not rounding up for, for the pieces or are they rounding up?
Okay, so for the required affordable housing, they're rounding up. But for, you're saying for the 40% of 99 is 39.6.
Right, so in my mind, that's 40 units.
Okay.
Forty minus 15 is 25.
Right, that's.
Right, you in agreement with that?
In agreement with that, yes.
So, so 25, an additional minimum 25 units shall be affordability income restricted to at or below 80%.
If you combine the two lots, that's when you come up with the one unit less. But since these are two separate petitions, I think we need to look at them distinctly.
I get the 25 as well on 13B, which is the one that you're discussing.
This is going to be required, though.
Yes.
Okay.
What's that, Ken? Okay, does anyone have any other questions for Michelle? Ken Antinucci.
So on that same condition, are we adding the 70% local preference? Are we stating that?
See, I think we, I think, I don't know that we can legally say that it has to be 70% from Malden. In our zoning, in the ordinance, it says shall be whatever's legal. Isn't that how it's worded, Michelle?
It's to the maximum extent permitted by law.
Maximum extent permitted by law.
So the 70% is because that is, that is what is permitted by law? That, that, that essentially is the percentage, yes.
You're okay with including the 70%?
And that's for the initial lease-up?
Yep, yeah, no, that's understood that as attrition happens and different vacancies and things.
So if we can modify condition two and add with a 70% of local preference from Malden residents? Just add 70 there? Or do we have to add a 10th condition?
I mean, I'm more honestly on that, maybe if, if this is true, that the law may change. What if it goes up or goes down, you know? If it technically goes below 70, then they're required to do 70, but it's against the law to do 70. So I maybe just keep it as by law. I think that's why this was written into the ordinance that way, but again.
In case the law, in case the law changes.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, honestly, what you want to do.
I think it makes sense to keep it as permitted by law, just because if it does go up.
If the law changes, we can adjust the number.
Yes.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions? For Michelle, Stephanie Stone.
Just a procedural question. The December 16th Public Project Review Meeting, the Site Plan Review Committee. That's, and it looks like they're talking about, you know, things that we would typically talk about here like trash, parking layout, driveways, et cetera. So that would replace what we would typically do on this board.
Yes, the standards for this special permit, the criteria, only these two have given you. Compliance with the applicable provisions and Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. So the Inclusionary Zoning is what we've been focusing on. The applicable provisions are basically the site plan review. All the Rose Quarry Reclamation Redevelopment District regs. But we're not going to determine that, the Site Plan Review Committee is going to. So that's why this condition in here, nine, they are still required to comply with site plan review.
Right. And I imagine the Site Plan Review Committee will have similar information that we do or see the things that we've seen already. And I, I just want to make sure they would hear the things that we've heard about, the parking issues and transportation issues and potential trash issues.
Yes, what I will say is that the, the application materials are identical. So they'll be seeing the same plan. The thing is, there is potential that they may want something modified or changed when they're looking at the roadway widths or the parking layout. So that's why I put that in there, that the plan may be modified if it's required. If you, are you talking about the trash and transportation issues we heard last, at the last hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I don't know what they will hear or what they won't hear. They're going to hold a Public Project Review Meeting, which is similar to a hearing, but it's not exactly the same as a hearing. Public will be able to comment. Do you?
Well, Stephanie, I'm on the Site Plan Review Committee and I will bring that up as recently as yesterday, driving to work, that's where I get on the highway. I saw a guy jump over the little guard rail and run down the hill and jump into his car. So that's real and, and I will bring it up on the 16th.
Yeah, that sounds great. And also with the amount of people that we're talking about adding more residents or more, more housing, just the, it does seem like there's a lack of public transportation in the area.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just do want to note, I won't, we won't get into the details of it, but, you know, at the last hearing, you did hear some concerns and the board did direct me to send an email, which I did send to various city department heads. I was actually just trying to find it. And I also sent it to the petitioner so they would be aware. One of their team members, Attorney Schultz, was here. She, she was the one here at the presentation, so she heard it. She heard that information that was raised at the public hearing. And on October 24th, I did send, as I said, to various city departments, a list of all the questions and concerns that we heard about parking, about signage, about road and control, trash dumping and things like that, and asked that they be looked into. I did get a couple of responses. I will follow up again in advance of the December meeting. So I wanted to just note that.
No, thank you.
You all set, Stephanie?
Yes, I'm all set.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions or comments for Michelle? Is there a motion? Ken Antinucci.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to grant a special permit for proposed Lot 13B as recommended by a city planner with nine conditions as amended.
Thank you, Ken's made a motion. The amended recommendation from planning staff, Eric McCush.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Eric McCush has seconded Ken's motion. And Michelle, give me a second here and I will queue up the mics. Okay, go ahead.
Ken Antinucci?
Yes. Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Sucey?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Chuck Hylen.
Yes. So the, the petition for lot thirteen B has been approved with conditions. So if you just take us through the lot fourteen B conditions, Michelle, I think we're going to have the same tweaks.
So regarding the petition for lot fourteen B, the recommendation is to grant a special permit subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans except as modified by these conditions. Two, the maximum number of drawing units is eighty-two. A minimum of thirteen units shall be affordable housing units as defined by city ordinance. And up to, I had an additional nineteen units may have an affordability income restriction of seventy to eighty percent AMI. And up to an additional thirty-two units may have an affordability income restriction of eighty-one percent to one hundred twenty percent AMI, all with a local preference for Malden residents to the maximum extent permitted by law and funding programs. So that's how I subtracted thirty-two, thirteen from thirty-two to get the nineteen. Three, prior to issuance of any occupancy permit, developer owner shall comply with all terms of the memorandum of understanding dated September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four regarding affordable housing units, which is attached here to and incorporated here on by reference. Four, all units shall be home ownership units, home ownership units. Five, developer, and on that note, the petitioner mentioned a couple of times, called them for sale units. I think home ownership is how it's written in the ordinance, home ownership, affordable housing. So home ownership is actually one word, though, home ownership units. Five, developer owner shall comply with the MEAP certificate dated January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four regarding fifth notice of project change. Six, compliance with all conditions of the Malden Planning Board, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four approval of the definitive subdivision plan. Seven, no rights authorized by the special permit may be exercised until the approved and endorsed definitive subdivision plan that creates lot fourteen B has been recorded by the petitioner owner. Eight, a minimum of one hundred forty-four parking spaces shall be provided on site for use of the residents. Nine, the proposal is subject to site plan review and requires compliance with title twelve point twenty-eight point one forty of the code of the city of Malden. Site plan and other plans may be modified if required by site plan review approval.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. And with regard to the thirty-two verse thirty-three, the only thing I'll say is forty percent of eighty-two units is thirty-two point eight. So I would think that would roll up to thirty-three units.
So twenty.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, honestly. This is, this is, they may do this, so.
Right.
It's not, I don't want to say as important, but they may, you know, they may do it and they may not do it. So I don't know if it's, I, I think it's important to include because it reflects what their commitment is.
We'll leave it to whomever makes the motion, whether they want that to be thirty-two or thirty-three.
Oh, I thought you were talking about changing the nineteen to twenty.
Both.
And the thirty-two to thirty-three. I see, I see. Okay. Okay.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Michelle? No questions? Is there a motion? Ken Antinucci.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to grant the special permit for proposed lot fourteen B with the nine conditions amended per recommendation of planning staff, specifically condition two, changing the number to add an additional minimum of twenty units, have an affordable income restriction seventy to eighty percent AMI, and additional thirty-three units may have affordability income restriction of eighty-one to one twenty percent.
Okay, is there a second? Henry Sucey.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, second? I, I didn't see you up there, Ms. Did you have something, or?
No, I just, sorry, I thought you were going to ask me about the time on the refining.
Okay. Thank you. And Henry Sucey has seconded. Let me queue him up, Michelle, and then we'll. Okay, go ahead.
Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Sucey?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Chuck Hylen?
Yes. And the second portion associated with lot fourteen B has been approved with conditions. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't need to do, okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is one ninety-four, one ninety-eight Ferry Street. Is the petitioner present? If you are, come up to the microphone. And I'll just say for everyone's benefit again, if you come up to the microphone and speak, please give your name and your residential address and sign the clipboard.
Yeah, my name, my first name is Gilbert, my last name is Norgel.
Thank you. Yep, you can go ahead. One second, we'll just read the thing while you're signing in. Go ahead.
The Malden Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Herbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, two fifteen Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. At seven PM on Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four on the petition of Gilbert Norgel on behalf of Poplar, Poplar Hill Trust, permanent application number CMID dash zero six five eight six two dash twenty twenty-four, seeking a special permit under title twelve point twelve point zero three zero of the code of the city of Malden to allow restaurant use of the property in the neighborhood business zoning district, namely to install a kitchen for takeout service in the existing convenience store in the storefront space known as one ninety-four dash one ninety-eight Ferry Street at the building, at the property known as N. numbered one eighty-six dash one ninety-eight Ferry Street, Malden, Mass., and also known by a city assessor's parcel ID number zero eight six four zero nine nine zero two.
Thank you, Diane. And with that done, sir, if you'd like to give your presentation and tell us what you're looking to do?
Yes, good, good evening. Unfortunately, the architect is not here, he's on his way. He gets stuck in traffic, but I'm going to do my best to, you know, since, you know, the Shakespeare language is not my modest tongue, so I would like you guys to be. So what it is, from the location, the subject is one ninety-four dash one ninety-eight Ferry Street. Right now, it's a convenience store. And the project was, as a matter of fact, you know, I was doing about it since before COVID. So when COVID hit, I think I've applied before COVID. And so COVID hit, so I let it slide. So I, I come up to, how could I say, that the cost of living is getting so crazy. And my rent jumped from thirty-one hundred to almost five thousand. And my electricity bill is just, bless you. At some point, I couldn't even talk about it. I was like, okay. And my wife, we sat down, she goes, what are you going to do? I was like, it is what it is. So I said, she goes, what about the kitchen that you have applied and paid the fee? I was like, I was like, yeah, I think that's a good idea. And then I went to, I think last year, I went to Stop and Shop, and then they have that small kitchen they put there. And then she goes, you see, you, and there's so many other convenience stores, you know, there's the a little bit more competition out there. I was like, okay. So since, you know, we've been having, you know, issues, you know, financial issues because of the, like I said, the, the rent goes up almost double, the electricity bill, I was like, okay. And a little extra income will not help, will not hurt. So I come to the board and ask you guys to see if you guys can, you know, give, not, as a matter of fact, not the board. So I've applied, and everything went smoothly and considered that nice lady over there sent me a letter, said, oh, you're going to need to have a, a special permit for it. At the time, I didn't know what, what is it, a special permit? So I, she goes, yeah, we have to have the architect involved again. So he's on his way, he gets stuck in traffic. Like I said, I'm not, you know, very savvy in that part of the thing. And so what we're going to be doing is, especially, and I have all the friends in the community that, you know, that kitchen will, you know, help everybody. And so it's not going to be a big, big thing, it's just a small, little takeout thing. And so we're going to be serving some, you know, chicken soup and french fries, you know, chicken nuggets, all those. To make it like little burgers, like I said, to get a little bit more extra income coming in. And second, my, I'm a serve safe train guy. I have my serve safe, serve safe now certificate. Plus also, I've been training in, I've, I've trained in food allergen. So those are the, the area that, you know, I have a little knowledge. Now for the, I don't know what the question is going to be, but overall, that's probably what exactly what it is. The idea is just to get a little bit more extra income to pay the bills.
Okay, let me ask you a few questions, if you don't mind.
Oh, it's good.
Regarding the menu, you've mentioned chicken soup, burgers, french fries, and?
Oh, it's, those are the, like I said, it's going to be a takeout, it's not going to be a sitting place. So that's it, we, you know, I'm Haitian, so we're going to have a little rice and what else? And like I said, it's going to be mostly, for the meat, it's going to be chicken burger. And we put a good, good in pork too, a little pork, and that's about it.
A broad menu of, of items, but it will all be takeout? There'll be no consuming the food on?
No, no, no. There was the, we probably gonna put like, it's part of the plant too, it's inside the plant, you might say. A little, like, how do you call that, like a little banquet by the window?
A buffet or a counter?
No, 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 no. What is it? I'm talking about.
A counter?
A little counter, like, you know, like, can sit like three people, that's all. By the window, just in case.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, see, I see, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, but I, I was in your store recently. What types of things are you going, what are you going to do to the interior of the store?
Say the.
What are you going to do to the interior of the store if you put this kitchen in? Because it seemed kind of crowded, and, you know, there were bags of rice all in the windows where you're saying you're going to have people sitting and eating. There was just a lot of shelving that just seemed to be kind of random.
What it is, is just, we're probably going to downsize in certain area. And because the kitchen itself will be sitting in that corner deep inside, if you're looking at the plan.
Right, if you, if you go in, right now, it's kind of separated off. It appears to be next to basement stairs?
Yes.
So it's that area there that you're going to make the kitchen? But it was, it was kind of crowded and cramped in the rest of the store. So how are you going to open up? Because I looked at the plans, and the plans are lovely. The, the plans show it nice and open and all this stuff. And without some major shifting or, as you said, downsizing, getting rid of some of those shelves and things like that, and some of the freezers and refrigerators. I don't see you being able to be as open as your plans indicate.
Uh, yes, we do, because what happened, because you, you just worked there just for a few minutes, but me, who've been there for like, you know, almost every day, I pretty much understand exactly how we get. Because what happened, the way we're going to do it, we're going to put the shelf this way, because right now, the shelf is facing from south to north. So we're going to do it from east to, from west to east. So I mean, as you're driving by Ferry Street, you're going to have to get to see the counter. It's going to be pretty neat, and I have the, the architect who's going to design it. So like I said before, so the job is to make it wide open so it doesn't have to interfere with other, you know, the, the grocery spot of the, of the business. So we're not going to let you down, so everything going to be very clear and, and pretty neat there. And I know the city is going to have to, the town is going to have to come back there before we get, you know, the, the, the right to, to start serving. And so we pretty much know what the challenge is going to be, but it's going to be a good, a good thing.
Okay, so the idea is you are going to need to do some renovating, but it's still, now the, is it still going to be an accessory use to the convenience store with what you're serving? Or have, are you really cutting over from a convenience store to a restaurant?
It is going to be the convenience store. Like I, there's one, one of mine has down in Lebanon Street, right across the charter school. It's pretty much almost the same layout, same thing. Because what happened, we're not going to, we're going to have like that buffet thing. So we put everything, so people, okay, give me that piece. So it's easy, like, probably like three minutes, you, and they give it to you. We're going to have a screen there where the, the menu is going to be right there. Okay, give me number two, number three, probably french fries and chicken or burger or rice, whatever it is. So we're not going to keep, keep it crowded because though. it crowded, because though, the way it's gonna, it's going to be, everything gonna be displayed right in front of you. You look at it and you say, okay, give me this one, give me this one. So just to get it, I don't know if I answered that question pretty, pretty well.
So, so there'll be someone serving the customers?
That's correct, yes.
Right. It's not gonna be a buffet where you have the food prepared and laid out, and people go up and take some chicken and some potatoes or whatever?
No, no. So somebody, because what happened, the screen, the, the counter that we're gonna put, gonna have some screen on it, just, you know, for, for, for the safety part of it, you know. And you just look at it and you say, okay, I would like to get this one. And then somebody gonna just put it in your plate for you. And I would like to get this one, I would like this, just to get, to get it. It's not gonna be self-safe.
Do, do you see a need to increase your staff that are working there?
Definitely, yes.
What, what are you gonna go for? Because right now I, I saw two people, and then there seemed to be some people hanging around.
Yes. So we put a, for the kitchen part of, we're gonna, I think it's part of the plan. I give it to Mrs. Moreno, I think, probably three people for now.
So three people for the kitchen plus the convenience store staff?
That's correct, yes.
So that's gonna be five?
About five, including myself too.
And then owner. So there'll be six people on site all the time?
Definitely all the time. Probably not all the time, because we're gonna have the cook and the person that's serving. And because there'll probably be some rotation, but I know I probably, I'm gonna try to hire three, you know, three more people.
Okay, because it just seems like a lot of people, that's tough. Imagine parking's tough in Judson Square. Do you have off-site parking for your employees?
Uh, because some of them, they pretty much take the train, and the bus stop is right there. I don't, I don't think this one will be impeded with the traffic at all. I don't think, for, for the staff, I have, missed the, the funeral home, Mr. Goldman, he's a good friend. So that's why I parked my car, all my staff parked their car there.
Okay.
So as a matter of fact, he received the letter, the, because I have to put it in the newspaper. He's the one that come to my store the other day, and he tell me, good luck. And so he tried to, he's a very good person, good, good. It's a good. Like I said, the, the parking will be, will not be an issue with, especially for my staff. We have private parking.
What do, do you anticipate the hours of operation to be?
That's a good question. So probably, I think, what, the way we're gonna do it, I would say probably, for now, I think, at the beginning, we're probably gonna do lunch and dinner. I don't think we're gonna include breakfast. I would say probably serving from nine to seven P. M. or to nine to eight for now, until maybe if it, as it goes, you know, more business coming, and then we're gonna...
So nine A. M. to eight, eight P. M.?
I would say nine, you know, give it less than nine to nine for now.
What, what, what are your current hours of operation?
Right now, we open the store from eight to ten thirty P. M.
Okay, so it's just be within that normal range?
That normal, yeah.
I have a question. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Well, I'll ask one more question. I didn't see you wait in, Eric. Give me a second. When I went in, I went in a door that was marked a realtor, and then you have the stairs going up into what I would call the convenience store.
Oh, I see, because I removed the sign.
So when I, when, when I went in, it was the cashier, and then some people standing, purchasing things or whatever, right. And then you had the convenience store. Is there a realtor operating there?
No, no, no.
So they're not there, it's just an old sign?
It used to be, and then I took over, and I've applied for a license, probably like, I think I took over that side, because they moved their, their shop to another location. And then the landlord called me, said, do you wanna expand? I was like, sure. And I took over. And it was my place, used to be one ninety-six, one ninety-eight. So before COVID, and I, I've signed with him, and I, I took over when the realtor left. But I have to remove the sign. That's, the sign sealed it.
Okay, and, and I also noticed that the, I guess it would be the one ninety-eight door was locked?
Yeah, my brother, what happened, somebody was stealing stuff. And a lady took a bag of rice, because the rice was there, and then that's the reason. We used to let it open all the time until probably, I think, almost a month ago. That's when I was like, okay, because sometimes kids come and grab stuff, and, and by the time for you to chase them, you say, ah, forget about it. And then we start locking the door. Oh, you're the one that came, because my brother told me that. He goes, oh, we have to keep the door open again. I was like, because...
Okay, so someone came in to tell you you had to keep it?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, I just happened to observe that it was...
Oh, okay. As a matter of fact, we just let it open again. But it was some issue stealing.
Okay, so you'll keep that open from now on, I imagine. Eric McCush?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding trash, you're currently pay as you throw? Is that gonna seem the same?
I have an easy disposal.
Okay.
That's gonna be coming to, to get them. So as it get busy, so right now, we're gonna have them do it once a week, or maybe twice a week. As, I guess by probably a couple months from now, they're probably gonna get busy. And then, so I already talked to them, and then they said, you know, based on the volume, so they're gonna charge us.
And do you have any plans to mitigate trash from your customers if they're taking a, a bag of to-go food and they eat it right outside? Where, where are they gonna throw that?
Uh, I have a, a big barrel inside, so that, which is gonna be there. But since it's gonna be a takeout, hopefully, and that's what Mr. Goldman told me. He goes, we're gonna keep, keep it clean. And for the trash, I'm sorry, for the, the question was, where I'm gonna put, if I'm gonna put something to, for, for the customer?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
That's gonna be inside?
Uh, I think, yes, yes. Because I'm gonna put it right there as they open the door, because usually they're not gonna eat in there. It's just take it and leave, because I, I'm, I'm not gonna put any tables there. I didn't apply for, for table, for tables as well. So they, I probably gonna put like a small thing, if, just in case, those, like I said, those sitting thing by the windows, if they finish with it, they put it right there. And then I, I discard it, put it in the big barrel myself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. On the, on the subject of trash storage, I see on one of the plans that were submitted, it looks like it's in front of the basement door and the stairs down to the basement?
Uh...
Is this gonna be in a bin of some sort, or?
Is it gonna be?
Describe it to me if you could.
It's a big, uh, I think, probably like seven, seventy-five gallons or probably a hundred gallons. I have one over there at the store. Unfortunately, I didn't take the picture to show you. This is where we're gonna put it, right, right there. It's a probably a big container. I talked to the easy disposal people. They already come on site. They said, okay, that's what they said to me, you know, if it's full, and then you call us, and then we come and pick it up. So that's the reason. It's gonna be right there, and it's by the door going to, to the basement.
Okay, so you're definitely gonna have to rearrange the shelving?
Yes.
Because you can't, you couldn't get a bin. We allowed a tote bin out of there the way it is right now.
Uh, right, because everything gonna be rearranged, because I have a company, that's what they do. They, they're gonna come in and, and we, we ship the whole thing.
Okay, um, I did have a couple, okay, I don't see anyone else. I did have a couple other questions about, I was trying to find on the map, in the legend, it said something about a grease trap for A three, and I couldn't find that on the plan. And also, the green, I don't know, green hardware, I can't read what it...
So, so what page are you in?
Green handler? Okay, I'm looking at this one here.
Oh, that, that plan there?
Yes. I'm just curious. I didn't see the grease trap. I would imagine it's over by where the grill is and the french fry.
Uh, it's gonna be under the, the three, three base sink usually, that's what we do.
Under the sink it will go?
Under the three base sink, it's got it.
Okay, so the three sinks that are there, or the utility sink? There's a hand sink called B, and then a mop sink called B two. I'm not familiar with that. So the grease trap can would go under one of those? There's A says three sinks, then the hand sink in B. So it'll be one of those first three?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I just, I just couldn't find it on the, on the map, and I wasn't sure.
Okay.
And I'm not familiar with how the, the whole grease trap works. Okay. Let's see, what other questions did I have? Answer that, that. No, that's all I had. If anyone else has any other questions. Michelle, if you have anything?
Yeah, I had one other question, and I wasn't clear. I thought that the, and if you could just clarify, the seat that you're showing in front of the windows, I thought that was for people waiting to pick up the food. But now you're saying it's a counter where they can sit and eat?
Uh...
Which is it, and, just so that, you know, we make sure if the board grants a special permit, they don't put restrictions in, yeah?
I'm sorry to stop you. Just to answer this question, that's exactly what it is, just people to wait for their meal. The question, the gentleman asked, what happened if while they're waiting, they, they, they open the food or eat it? So if I'm gonna have a small little trash bench, so they can put it. That's the thing, that's, it's for them to, like, let's say you waiting for french fries while they frying for you. So you have to have a place to hang in for, for two, three minutes. So that's exactly why, and that window gonna be like a, a waiting thing. So it's not like a, somebody that, you know, they have to sit like permanently.
So they're not, there, nobody's gonna be eating inside the store, or they might be eating?
Uh, I don't have it for them to eat inside the store. Like I said, but certain things you cannot control it.
You're not planning it. Okay, well, just if the board grants a special permit that says there's no dining inside, you couldn't put chairs and a table, you know?
No, no.
You wouldn't be able, you'd have to come back and ask to do that, unless that's what you're planning to do. You're not planning to do that.
I, I think I probably gonna have to come back, because I don't know.
Okay.
I don't want to...
So that bench is just to sit while people waiting?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just say for the board's reference, all the trash, storage, disposal, all that has to be approved by the Board of Health. So I understand he's proposing it's gonna be kept inside in a large barrel for pickup. I don't know if that's gonna be approved or not by the Board of Health, so, you know.
It was approved before, but by, uh, the, because now I have to reapply for, I met with Mr. Finn.
Peter Finn, yeah.
Yes. So, and I think Elsa last year.
Yeah.
Approved, and you might have it. And...
Yeah, I have a copy of that.
She was there, she went there two, probably three to four times.
Okay.
Before she, and she was, she had a little concern after that. She, she realized, and me and the architect talked to her and showed her certain thing. And then she called me, she goes, I guess you're fine.
Okay, yeah, you, you, everybody has a copy of that. That was the, this Board of Health approval from August twenty-three. When I asked Board of Health just for confirmation, they did say they wanted to see the new plan, which has more details on it than the plan that was originally. So this was a, a permit for the kitchen. It does say easy disposal once a week, but there's no dumpster on site. And then it also says you will use pay as you throw program. So anyway, Board of Health has to approve that. It does say cook to order on this, and this would be an annual permit application. The convenience store already has app permits for the convenience store, retail food, and also milk and dairy, the freezers, and nicotine. But it doesn't have it for this food, what they call food establishment. That's the permit he'll need.
No, the one that Elsa had, the one that the butterfly has last year, it was for the, for the kitchen.
Right, right, right.
Okay, Eric Henry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you as well. Michelle, I'm, I'm listening to you, and I'm envisioning some similarities between what you're, you're saying and, and establishment right across the street cosmos. So I think they have a similar counter setup as you're describing, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yes.
And having been in this establishment for it and, and patronize this, yes, you, you may sit down and rest your weary bones while your, your meal is being prepared, but if one would choose to sit down and, you know, eat their fries while they're waiting for their pork to be prepared or something, that, you know, it's, I think that any refuge or something like that would be established by his, his customers could be easily taken care of by their staff. It's not designed for that sort of thing, like a, a table or something like that, but there are probably two or three chairs where one can sit down and, and, and eat there. Uh, well, not sit and rest, but if they're grazing, I guess that's the case. It's, but it's not really designed for, but you're not gonna kick somebody out if they wanna sit down there.
That's the thing, yeah, kinda like, uh...
It's, you know, that, that, I think that should, that's the basic understanding. I hope that clarifies things.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Anyone else have any questions? Is there anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Well, I just wanna say that, you know, it's gonna be challenging, but I'm looking forward for, for that thing, uh, to, to get it done, if you guys allows me to, to do it. And, and also I have a kid. My daughter, she's in med school. I'm paying for almost everything. It's, it's rough, that extra income there. And then I got these people, like, some customers, you know, hopefully, they're gonna get some discount there. And so I, I did my part, and I have, I have to thank Mrs. Michelle, who's been, you know, holding my hand, because I didn't know nothing about special permit. And also, this is my architect. He was running late, so...
Okay.
So...
One last question for you. Presuming it, the permit gets approved, how long would it take you to renovate your current location?
I would say, I think, we, the project probably will start early, mid-January. It's probably gonna be like a good, to do it right, at least two months, minimum, to do it right. Because I have to put the money together to get the plumbing, electricity and everything. And I have to hire a company to come in, do the configuration, to make it like very bright, you know. So when you come next time, so we say, oh, wait a minute, okay, that's good. I don't wanna get you, you know, you know, get you guys disappointed. So I wanna make sure that, you know. It's not, it's not only me, it's the whole community.
Would, would you anticipate needing to close down the convenience store while this is being done?
Uh, I think we talk about it probably, certain, certain work has to, we have to probably, let's say we're gonna do some, do you think we're probably gonna need to close the store? Yeah, the question was, if you think we're gonna...
Sir, if you could give us your name and ad, residential address for the record?
Absolutely. My name is Aristotle McGore. I'm over in Everett. I'm a general contractor and also architect with this project. So the question was, will we need to close certain areas?
No.
Again, that's more for coordination. If we need to close down, if we need to give you guys notice, we will. But again, this is more of, you have to coordinate with, obviously, the owner, obviously, with the subcontractors to make sure we get... to make sure we get, we get it done the proper way.
Okay, I was just more curious than anything else. It's not a requirement. I'm just more curious.
Right, it's more of a coordination. If we need to close down certain section, we will. If we need to close down the store, then that's what we need to do. But again, we have to go through the approval process, we have to go through inspection process to make sure it's done the, the proper way.
Okay, and ma- uh, make sure you sign the clipboard, please?
Absolutely, thank you.
So we have the correct spelling and address and all that stuff?
Sure.
Okay, any, um, other questions for the petitioner? I don't see any, anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Uh, no, as a matter of fact, I wanna thank you guys, and I know it's lit. And this is my first time in front of a, it's pretty challenging in front of an audience like that, my friends watching, it's, it's not, it's not that easy for me.
No, no, you did fine. Thank you very much. You don't worry about it. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll ask if there is anyone who would like to speak in favor of the petition. Anyone to speak in favor. You can come up, give your name and residential address for the record? No, no, anyone in the audience who wants to speak or? I know we have one letter in favor to read.
How are you doing?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Stanley Osias. I, I used to be a resident of the area, and I also frequent some, certain establishment around the Malden area. And to speak in favor of Mr. Norquell, I believe that there is a kind of a demand for the service that he provides, as actually a lot of the food probably will also be ethnic based, because we all are Haitian. And I'm pretty sure, I mean, not I'm pretty sure, I believe also there's a huge community of Haitian in Malden. So therefore, I think that it also, he will provide a well-needed service for the community, or at least for the Haitian community.
Okay, thank you, and don't forget to sign the clipboard, please? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, you, you're welcome to have a seat. You don't have to stand up if you don't want to, sir? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in favor? Diane, do you have anything to read in favor?
I do.
Let me. Very good, go.
It's a letter dated November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. It's directed to dear Chairman, Chairman Iovin and members of the planning board. I am writing this letter in support of the special permit applications before you this evening regarding one ninety-four dash one ninety-eight at one eighty-six dash one ninety-eight Ferry Street, to install a kitchen in the convenience store to provide takeout restaurant service. As our smaller independent stores are trying to compete with larger chains, chains and find new ways to serve customers, the inclusion of takeout options that complement the convenience store is a prime example of better use of space as well as a meeting that customers needs. I've had a conversation with Charles Chris Webb, Director of the Board of Health, who has, who has informed me that his department has met with the petition and the petitioner has filed the appropriate modified floor plans. I believe that granting this petition will allow the smaller business owner to thrive at this location. I agree that approval of this petition is predicated on compliance with the seven conditions outlined in the planned recommendations. Again, I offer this letter in support of granting the special permit this evening. If you require additional information, please feel free to contact me. Respectfully submitted, Peg Crowe, Ward one, Ward one, City Councilor, nine Hancock Street, Malden.
Thank you, Diane. And, um, you, that's the only one that you had?
Yes, that's the only one I have.
Very good. I'll ask one last time, anyone else to speak in favor? Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone speak in opposition? Diane, do you have anything to read in opposition?
No.
So if there's no one that would like to speak in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Uh, Michelle, can you take us through your staff report, please, and recommendation?
This is the report and recommendation dated November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. I won't read it verbatim into the record. It's incorporated by reference into the record. There's one correction here on the front page, so the Realtors office is no longer there. We've confirmed. I didn't go in the building when I did the site visit, so I did see the signage and I was not aware they were no longer there, so. That is corrected. You heard about the petition, excuse me, the subject property, the petitioner, who's the current operator of the store. The proposal, as you heard, is to provide takeout service, restaurant service by installing a kitchen. The special permit that this board granted in two thousand and seven to allow the convenience store in the first place did have a condition that stated no food prepared on premises. So that condition will need to be amended if you grant the special permit, or would be amended. Here's a detail of the plans that were submitted, um, in terms of zoning. You have copies of all the plans. In terms of zoning, the property is located in the neighborhood Business Zoning District. The convenience store was allowed by special permit granted in case oh-seven, oh-two. You have a copy of that decision. The hair salon is classified as retail services and the liquor stores classified as retail sales are allowed by right in this district. The proposed restaurant use is allowed by special permit in this district. Director Butters is to the south, a multifamily dwelling. To the east rear, um, of the other side of the same building is a manufacturing business, that's six Holy Oak Street. That's the part of the building that's connected. To the north, a funeral home. To the west, on the opposite side of Ferry Street, a multifamily dwellings, a two-family dwelling, two restaurants and convenience store. Surrounding land use is a residential, various businesses. Dimensional controls, the building predates the current zoning, it violates all existing dimensional controls except frontage and height. The proposal maintains the same non-conformities. Terms of parking requirements, um, existing use of the property, again, there's no Realtor, so what I'm not clear about is where that space is in the building. Because when this board granted the special permit, the convenience store was nine hundred square feet. And I do understand that there may have been an expansion, so I'm not clear about that, but I think at a minimum, the, the uses require fourteen spaces. The property is pre-existing non-conforming, there's no parking on site. If the proposed restaurant is considered an accessory use, it's included in the parking requirements for the convenience store, and the proposal does not increase the parking violations. In terms of loading dumpsters and screening, the property doesn't comply with any of the requirements because of the size of the lot and the configuration of the building on the lot, the proposal maintains the same non-conformities. In terms of permits and other approvals, as we talked about, the existing convenience store has permits from the Malden Board of Health for food service, specifically milk, ice cream, retail foods, convenience store, and tobacco, nicotine delivery products. The Board of Health approved the floor plan with the kitchen fixtures, which is included in the plan, plans you have. The board will need to review and approve the updated floor plan, um, which shows all the other details. And again, they would need a different type of permit from the Board of Health for the restaurant, uh, the kitchen, which is called a food establishment permit. There was a question about the fire alarm system, a prior condition of the special permit, a condition of the prior special permit was that installation of a fire alarm system be done. It was committed by the property owner to be done by two thousand and seven. And it has not, I did ask the fire department, but I haven't received a response to date, so it's not been verified whether this was done. Findings required to grant the special permit, one, any creation or increase in violation of dimensional controls or parking requirements will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Two, the traffic and traffic patterns generated by the proposed use will not adversely impact any of the surrounding streets or traffic, create a traffic safety hazard. Three, the proposed use will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Four, the proposed use is not in conflict with surrounding land uses. Five, the proposed use is in the interest of the common good. So provided you make those findings, I made this recommendation prepared prior to the public hearing. The recommendation is that a special permit be granted, subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans unless modified by these conditions. Two, the floor plan must be reviewed and approved by the Board of Health and may be modified if required by the Board of Health. Three, trash, storage and solid waste disposal is subject to review and approval by the Board of Health. Four, the kitchen and restaurant use may only be accessory to the convenience store. Any expansion of the kitchen or restaurant, including the provision of tables and or seating for onsite food service or dining, shall require seeking an amendment of the special permit. I didn't actually specify that it's takeout only. I don't know if you want to say that. The kitchen and restaurant use may be only accessory to the convenience store and shall be for takeout only, is what I would recommend if you want to include that. So adding that. Five, the basement may be used for storage and utilities only. Six, no sale of alcoholic beverages by the convenience stores allowed. And seven, compliance with building and fire codes.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle on the conditions? Excuse Mr. Gill, do you mind coming up for a second one more? Sir, you saw a copy of the staff report with the, um, proposed recommendation, uh, recommendation?
Is that this one?
Yes. So did you understand what each of those are?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that you understand what, what's being, what, what we, we may be voting on.
Yes.
Do you happen to know, and, and I missed this question, I had it written down, but missed it in my notes. Do you happen to know if their firearm system was ever installed?
As a matter of fact, uh, two weeks ago, every year the landlord sent, uh, I think, any little smoke, it goes straight to the fire department. So it's, uh, every year they have a, a test. The landlord would send us an email saying, by certain date, the fire.
But it's your understanding that the alarm system is in place? We still need to confirm it with the fire department and follow up on, um, Michelle's inquiry on whether it, that, that they have any record of it being installed. But according to you, as far as you know?
Yes.
You believe it's to have been installed?
It's a hard wire from, from my unit to, to the liquor store.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Building Inspector Miller, please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was at the location today because I understood there were some concerns about it. They do have a, a manual fire alarm system installed inside the building. They have, uh, heat detectors and manual pulls by the doors.
And that's up to code?
Yep.
No, that's great to know. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions for Michelle? If not, is there a motion? Can it be?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the special permit with the seven conditions as recommended by the planning staff.
Okay, thank you, and Eric McCush. I'll second that motion. And just to qualify that, is that the modified number four with takeout only?
Yes.
Thank you. I was gonna ask that too. Thank you.
Okay, let me get people queued up. Yes, Eric.
Point of clarification, what was the modified form again? I'm sorry.
The modified condition four was the kitchen and restaurant use may only be accessory to the convenience store and shall be takeout only. Shall be for takeout only. And then it went on to say any expansion of the kitchen or restaurant, including the provision of tables and or seating for onsite food service or dining, shall require seeking an amendment of the special permit. So I was just adding in that it's for takeout only, which is what he's proposing.
Right, so is there consequences if, uh, a patron would happen to sit at the, okay, all right, thank you.
I'm sorry. Um, if, if the petitioner was in violation of any of these conditions, the building commissioner or one of the inspectors would go out and, you know, issue a warning. And then I think after so many warnings, this, you know, issued a fine or a citation. So he would be notified if he's in violation of this. I don't know if one person eating one time is gonna do it, if it becomes a, there's a counter and there's chairs and seating and it's, you know, this dining.
I can understand the expansion. Uh, that, I, I get that part, and I think he understands that part too, but in its current configuration, if, there's not gonna be any pressure on this patron, if, I mean, this petitioner, if someone were to happen to eat at one of the sits, at, at, at one of the seats there?
No, but he, he's, he shouldn't be offering seating for onsite service or dining. So if somebody sits and while they're waiting starts to eat, that's not the same as onsite service and dining. I, he, as, as the chair or somebody said, he, or he, actually the petitioner said, he would discourage that. He will tell them, you know, so that, that, that's what's being proposed.
Understood. I, I, I.
He can come back and amend it. If in the future he does wanna office, offer dining and stuff, he could petition to amend that.
Right, okay, good, thank you.
Do you agree?
Yeah. Okay, you ready, Michelle?
Yeah, do, I mean, you verified that he's in a, in agreement with the seven conditions. Do you wanna ask about that amendment? Before you vote, confirm that it's takeout only?
Mr. Gill, can you please come up again? Uh, you understand that this would be for takeout only, as you had testified earlier in the evening?
Yes, but the question, um, I think, um, I have to follow that. So if, let's say one of the patrons just happened to open the box and eat something, so there will be violation now. And, uh, knowing, because you guys just opened my eyes and certain things because I don't wanna come here and say something and then go do something else. I have to be in compliance with it all the time. So, because, uh, now, because I don't know how much business I'm gonna get, how the traffic gonna be, if I'm gonna be there to control everybody. Because I, I don't wanna be, like I said, not in compliance with, with the law. So, uh, Mrs. Moore said, uh, who I always said, I might have to come back to apply for, for, uh, a permit to, because there will be that counter, uh, probably gonna be, have three stalls, three chairs by the window, that's all. And, uh, somebody's waiting there, they open, I don't want one of you guys to drive by to see somebody is waiting by the window.
No, but, but here's the situation. If you find that you've been open up for a No, but, but here's the situation. If you find that you've been open up for a year and you're finding your customers have a need and they're asking you, can you provide onsite dining, tables and chairs and things like that? And you wish to provide that, that's when you would need to come back and repetition. If someone's standing there and, and they pop open the container and start eating a few french fries while they're waiting for the rest of their order, that, that's not gonna put you in, that's not gonna put you out of compliance. And I think what you're gonna find is you're gonna find that there are ways for you to manage that. If you don't provide them, I, I can't imagine you're gonna provide them, if they order five things, that you're gonna give them to them one at a time. I would imagine you wait, you put it all in a bag, maybe you staple the bag, you hand it to them, they pay and they leave.
Definitely.
I mean, that will certainly reduce the opportunity for people to be snacking while, while they're waiting. You know, but you, you need to, you need to see how it's gonna work and how you're gonna set things up. And what, what we're really concerned about is that it's turning into a dine-in location rather than order by phone or walk, walk-in order, order a couple of things, take their food and leave.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I, I'm, I'm comfortable. I asked for the point of clarification. And for me, as the gentleman said, if he is, if, if his vision is akin to what Cosmos is doing, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And I think he would, you know, I couldn't foresee that being, you know, in, in noncompliance of, of the spirit of what we're talking about and a letter of what we're talking about here. So I just wanted to.
Because of Cosmos, they have, they have that thing that I, I'm gonna have.
Probably a couple of little seats there. So it's, but, but you don't see people's, if it's a similar, I'm comfortable with that. I'm just, I just, I, I just want him to be comfortable to saying that if we're putting this provision in here, he's not, oh my goodness, they're gonna come after me for somebody eating a french fry.
Okay, Michelle, what?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the other restaurant or the other situation. But when I heard counter and three stools, I think somebody is potentially going to sit there and eat something. Maybe not just snack while they're waiting. So if you want to put in an exception and just put in a limited, you know, seating, limited or something like that, it does sound like that might be happening. So I don't, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. But it sounds like a counter with a stools. Usually you see people sitting there eating with that. So.
It could, it could happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, if, if, if it's.
At first, I was a bit lost, but.
If, if the wording is such that it's limited.
One at a time, please. And Eric, you have requested the floor.
Thank you, sir. And I apologize for, for stepping on anybody if I were. If it, if we, if, if the phrase is to put limited in, I believe you were saying, Michelle?
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say you should put in exactly what he's, what he's proposing or what he thinks he's gonna be proposing. So this was talking about really just the restaurant's accessory and it's takeout only. But if you want to say limited seating, you know, I just don't know. I, I do know that that convenience store on Lebanon Street, some people were on the board, was turned into, went from a convenience store to a whole sit-down restaurant. And we did get, you know, it just kind of morphed into that.
So I'm not familiar with Cosmos, so I can't speak to that. But, but I, I'll be honest with you. I'm thinking that I, I don't know that that's gonna be a problem and that they're gonna be regularly, people regularly eating there. Maybe we just need to see if it turns into an issue and then we need to talk with the petitioner and see if, if, how he is viewing his business, whether it's turning into a dine-in situation versus a takeout situation.
So do you just want to say, you know, the condition as is shall be takeout only and just say no onsite food service or dining, leave it more concrete? Don't say tables, don't mention tables or seating, just say no onsite food service or dining?
I'm comfortable with my clarification. And we, we can, you know, I'm, I'm, we can proceed with the seconded motion.
Michelle, I don't know what you're asking me.
I'm saying if this is.
Because we have a motion.
Yes, yes.
It's been seconded.
That's right, right.
And.
Okay.
I don't know what you're asking. Are you asking Kenny and Eric to change their motion in second? Or, or what? I, I mean, I think it's okay the way it is.
Okay.
And to see how we proceed.
Okay.
I, I'm familiar with Judson Square. I can't imagine there's going to be that many people dining in. I may be wrong, but that's, do you feel we need to change any motion? I don't have something where tomorrow all of a sudden it's, well, geez, we should really talk about this. And, and you're not comfortable with the motion that was made, seconded and voted on. So if you see a problem, say it now rather than.
I'm saying, I'm saying that as it was recommended, it said, so there's no provision of tables, seating for onsite food service or dining, but apparently there is now. We're hearing that. So I wouldn't, either you, you don't want that to happen or you're okay with it. So I mean, maybe you just want to delete that. I, I don't know. I recommend to takeout only, but that doesn't make any sense if we know there's the option for somebody to sit there and eat. So.
I think there's an option for someone to sit and eat every place that makes her.
Okay. So then leave it as is and we'll move forward. That's, that's fine. It's fine. I think it'll, we'll, we'll find out soon enough if there's an issue, right?
I imagine so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So you're okay with Ken's motion and Eric's second?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. No one else has any other questions?
But that was with the modified condition that says takeout only.
Yes.
Okay, you're still, we're still with that.
Takeout only. That's still how you're viewing it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Okay.
Okay.
Ken Antinucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Risa Gray?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes, thank you.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Stephanie Stone?
Yes.
Chuck Iovan?
Yes. Petition's been granted with conditions. Good luck. What's that, Ken? Oh, okay. Okay, next, next item. On the agenda. Eric, is there any update on the community preservation meetings?
I'm voluntarily extended.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next meeting's next week and we have another one in December. Moving along with, you know, approval processes in, in January. So the ball is moving along.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ronnie has, he's not here this evening, unfortunately. But he has expressed an interest in taking up the gauntlet from you. So when he comes back, we'll, we'll address that at our December meeting. Okay, next one. Michelle, please, master planning activities.
So every month, what you've been receiving is a written update from the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. It's an update on the Open Space and Recreation Plan and the Comprehensive Plan, which is what the Master Plan is now called. But I have been noticing people leaving these. These are attached to the agenda. If you could please take it home and read it at least. So that, you know, you're, I know that you're getting the updates. We're not reading them out loud into the record. It is a public record. But so there's a memo dated November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four that has those two updates, updates on those two plans. Excuse me.
Okay, thank you. And so that covers Master Plan and Open Space?
Yes, it's an update on both plans.
No, I mean, you're, you're.
Yes, yes.
You're providing that in, in satisfaction of that.
It's the same group working on both projects.
Okay. The next meeting is December eleventh. That's gonna be, it was initially designed to be taking up on some proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. So it'll be a joint meeting with the, the City Council Ordinance Committee. There have been a few items that have been added to it that have time sensitive. So Michelle wanted to take a poll and see who might possibly be able to meet a little earlier in the evening than seven o'clock. So if it comes to it and everything shakes out the way it could, are folks available to meet at six thirty or six o'clock? Or does anyone have any hard stops? We know we're missing a couple of people next month.
Right. Henry has told me he's out in December. So he's the only one I know that's out. So if, but I, again, I don't want to try to, what we would, what I would say we do is that if we meet at six or six thirty, we're gonna do this, not the zoning amendments. We'll wait till seven to start that with the council. This would be this other public meeting that we have to do.
I'm available.
Okay, great. Well, this is just a public meeting. There's no public input. There's no presentation from the petitioner. It's, it's just going to be you going through the plan. It's a subdivision plan at, two subdivision plans actually, at a public meeting. So you won't be taking any testimony from anybody. You'll just review it, read the report, discuss amongst yourselves and, and just make a decision.
It's still December eleventh. It's just.
Yeah, I'm looking for six or six thirty. I hate to say six and then we, we go through it pretty quickly. Then we're sitting around till seven. So that's why I thought six thirty. Although I hear you, these things go longer than we think sometimes. A long time ago, maybe.
We've had, we've had the joint meetings at six.
Yeah, some of those.
I mean, six thirty, I think would be good. I think we should be able to quickly get through it. So.
Okay, so Michelle, you have the info you need?
Yes, is everybody a yes for six thirty?
Yes.
That's here. Okay. And I'll confirm with the other two because Henry won't be here. So we'll definitely need one of the other, either Ronnie or Tawadaj to confirm yes.
Okay.
So that we'll have a full board.
Okay, very good. I don't have anything else, Michelle. Do you?
No, I do not.
Unless someone has something else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Diane Chuha, seconded by.
I'll second.
Tawadaj, you got it. Risa Gray?
Second.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening and happy Thanksgiving.
I was gonna say, what did you get in the mess?
Yeah, no, what did I come from? I didn't eat anything.